Madam Chair, yes, I'm going to give you a brief report. And one of the items I wanted to advise the Commission on is we are looking at canceling the May 4th Planning Commission meeting. We'll have, send out the information via email, but that's what we're looking at right now. And then, just wanted to advise the Planning Commission that both yesterday and today, there are countywide informational meetings that are going on regarding cannabis. And then I'll ask our Chief Planner to weigh in on some of these meetings. We had staff attend these meetings yesterday in Latenville and in Willets. And there'll be meetings today in Ukiah, and I believe Fort Bragg was, is today, correct? And the idea is to provide information to the public as to how the process is going to be working. And then, I don't know if there's anything you want to add to that?
No, I think that's covered.
All right. And then on Tuesday, the Board of Supervisors had a discussion with regards to the implementation of a cannabis enforcement unit that would rest within the Code Enforcement Division of Planning and Building. And so, this was a presentation that was provided to the Board as to how that would effectively work. And ultimately, it would allow or create for some additional code enforcement positions in the department. And that division would be the central contact focal point for questions coming in on cannabis. And would also be working closely with the Ag Department and the Sheriff and other agencies with regards to the permit process and so on. But again, this is still in the early stages, and it was mostly a presentation to the Board as to how that would shape out.
Do you have any sense of when you expect to see projects emerging out of the original ordinance that Supervisors adopted?
Marilyn?
I'll address that. Marilyn Lynn Hunt, Planning and Building Services. So, the implementation of the medical cultivation regulations goes into effect on May 4th. So, at that point, permits will start being, making applications through the Ag Department, the Planning Department, Building Department, Environmental Health. Those are all part of a referral process from the Ag Department. And then, a lot of permit holders will have to get their permits from the state, different state agencies also. So, they anticipate a very, you know, quite a few people coming in. They're making appointments for permit applicants, and that cannot start until May 4th.
Gotcha. Thank you.
And that would conclude the Director's Report.
Okay. Matters from the public, no public here, so I think we'll open and close that one. There's nothing on the consent calendar, so I think we are ready for OA 2017-002.
Madam Chair, members of the Commission. What you have before you is a request to amend and repeal the current floodplain combining district ordinance within the inland and coastal zoning ordinances as they currently rest in two different zoning categories, inland and coastal, and replace them with a Chapter 22.17 combining both ordinances. So, we would in essence be taking them out of both the coastal and the inland, leaving a reference there, but then putting them in Chapter, creating a new Chapter 22.17, which is the section of the County Code that contains all the resource uses, Williamson Act, aggregate mining and so on. And so, the idea is to have one ordinance for the entire county. And so, the amendments that are proposed are basically to comply with recent changes in federal and state regulations. I'd also point out, the last time that the county's floodplain ordinance was updated was in 1992. However, back in 2008, we did bring forth some changes to the ordinance. And I would say that unfortunately, over time, what happened is the, because they had changes to the coastal as well, those did not go through the LCP process and were not certified. So, in essence, the DWR, Department of Water Resource, who's the contractor for FEMA, came to the county, I would say sometime in 2013, and did an audit and realized that we were still working under the old ordinance because the new changes had not been formally codified because of the LCP amendment requirement. So, in essence, we're still working with the old ordinance, and that's what FEMA was currently concerned about. So, we've made the changes and brought the ordinance up to date so that it complies with FEMA standards. And on page two of your staff report, we bullet itemed all of the items that are changing in the ordinance per FEMA's requirements. And so, a lot of these things are carryovers from the last time we did the ordinance amendment back in 2008. And then some of the changes, most recently with regards to valuation and substantial improvements, which are the, which are the new recommendations by FEMA. Otherwise, it's pretty much just cleaning up the ordinance and moving it forward. Now, with that, staff has done its due diligence on environmental review, has found it consistent with the, with SEQA, it's categorically exempt, and also consistent with the general plan inland and the LCP. And so, staff is recommending, well, first of all, staff has had numerous conversations with FEMA and DWR. And our most recent conversation with FEMA was yesterday morning. And they looked at the ordinance as written, and they say that it meets the standards now. And so, the big push now is because this ordinance is being processed concurrently with the Fed's process of adopting new FEMA maps for the county, they want our ordinance adopted by July 18th to coincide with their maps. Otherwise, they remove the county from the National Flood Insurance Program if we're not in compliance. So, that's pretty much where that's at. And so, again, we've reviewed the ordinance with FEMA, DWR, they're in agreement. One of the issues that, I wouldn't say issues, but one of the concerns that they brought up yesterday was, they understand that this has to go to the Coastal Commission for final certification. And so, as long as the Coastal Commission doesn't make any significant changes to the ordinance, they would be fine with it. And with that, staff is recommending that the Planning Commission recommended the Board approval of this ordinance amendment, and making the necessary findings on page four. And that would conclude my presentation.
Yes.
On page five, under P, fraud and victimization, the second sentence, starting in the, yeah, in examining this requirement, comma, "the will." Seems like something's missing there.
Mm-hmm.
The ordinance, maybe?
"They will."
Page five. Okay.
Or "they will," yeah.
But I don't know who "they" is. Yeah, I think it just, it should say the county will or the whatever. Since we're doing it, any other comments?
Yeah, but I'll hang on a minute until we address that one, because that's the one I had as well.
We also apparently have-
Yes, we'll just add the county in there. And we understand that there's some changes here that Council's going to go through with you this morning.
Yes. And so, I was going to ask Matt to, now, he had comments on the original motion, and I don't know about what in the text, but we would like to invite your comment now.
Good morning, Commissioners. Deputy County Counsel Matthew Cadros. In reviewing the, just had a couple of minor additions and changes to the ordinance as it was presented, just to get direct, you know, we can go over all of them, or I can get direction on a couple of things in general, starting on page 10 of the ordinance. Within Section 22.17.300 Administration and the following Point 305, there are subparagaths A, B, C, and D. And just for formatting purposes, at the end of A4, which reads, "If applicable, the location of the regulatory floodway," I would put a period there instead of the semicolon "and." That same change would happen at the end of B3.
So, we're deleting the word "and" and putting a period after "floodway," is that correct?
Correct. A similar change would happen at B, at the end of B3, at the end of C, at the end of D, and that's all for that section. That way, the A, B, C, and D, those are all lists, already a list under that opening paragraph. And then, to get rid of the "and's" makes it a tad cleaner. In Section 315, on page 11, it's a similar formatting change. The paragraph structure got lost in formatting issues. So, there's a Paragraph A, permit review, a Paragraph B, review use and development of other base flood data. Underneath that, that next paragraph, instead of a separate A, should be letter 1, oh, number 1, sorry. So, when base flood elevation data, that paragraph is 1. The paragraph that's there is B, if no base flood elevation data is available, that should be 2. So, the next line for simplified method should be lowercase a. The next two paragraphs should then be a letter I and letter double I. And then that detailed method paragraph should be a lowercase b. In going through this ordinance and also then formatting it for the Board, we may also make it more consistent with the code structure, which uses parentheses around the As and the Ones and the lowercase As. In that Paragraph A that we just renumbered to number 1, when base flood elevation data, the last sentence of that reads, "Any such information shall be submitted to the governing body for adoption." I'm proposing to change, the governing body should instead read Mendocino County Department of Planning and Building Services.
I'm lost. Where was that last one?
Sorry.
Is that right?
Okay, thanks.
And I'm sorry, could you repeat that, Matthew? I just found it too.
Okay, sorry about that. It's, so instead of the governing body in a bracket, that should be replaced with Mendocino County Department of Planning and Building Services. And actually, just make that Mendocino County, not the department.
Just Mendocino County?
Correct.
Okay.
And then, does the notification of other agencies change to B under that same section?
No, that stays C because the B was the review use and development of other base flood data, and we didn't change that.
Oh, okay. I see where you're going now. I got a little confused there.
I'm happy, guys. Other minor changes on page 12. Under Paragraph D, Documentation of Floodplain Development, towards the top of the page. There is the five numbered paragraphs underneath that with commas. I would just replace those commas with periods. And last change that I believe I had, and was on page, starts on page 14. The very bottom of the page has the Section 22.17.420, Standards for Subdivisions. And in that first line, under Paragraph A, it reads, "All new subdivision proposals, major or minor subdivisions, as defined in Title 17, Chapter, Article 2." After the chapter should be the number 17. And I think that's all of the, there are direct changes on that front.
And did you have any comment on the suggested motion?
As Director Gonzalez indicated, we have been talking with both FEMA, and we've had some conversations with the Coastal Commission. And we're still working out exactly how all aspects of this ordinance amendment will be carried out. At the moment, we're looking at simply recommending that the Board approve the adoption of Chapter 22.17 and the amendment of the inland zoning code to reflect the deletion of Chapter 20.120. And I believe we'll be having to possibly bring back some kind of an LCP amendment regarding the deletion of the coastal zoning code section. And as part of that process, the Coastal Commission may get a chance to review and add other things to this new Chapter 22.17. So, the motion, as I had read, talked about doing a lot of things at the same time. The staff report talks about doing amendments to the coastal element, the coastal plan right now, and recommending deletion of that. At this point, I think we'll just not deal with the coastal element, and we'll be working on that in the coming days and weeks to get that sorted out with Coastal Commission.
If I may through the Chair, the idea is, we want to go ahead and make sure that we're meeting the federal department, the FEMA's requirements at this point in time by having the ordinance at least go through the Commission and go through the Board, and then bringing an LCP amendment, as we'll call it a trailer to this. But yet, it will encompass everything by the time we're done with the process. And again, we'll be working with the Coastal Commission on this. And this is, it is late in the game, but at least we're trying to meet the federal standards right now by trying to get the ordinance adopted. The other thing that I did not mention is that the, I'll call it the major change in practice with Planning and Building is that the floodplain ordinance, as presented to you today, will now be enforced by the building official, by the building department. And the reason for that is that they deal with the pre and post-construction elevation certificates, and that's where a lot of this should really be caught. I looked at a lot of different ordinances around the state, looked at how the practices are in other communities. In fact, in Santa Clara, where I worked, it was the building official who handled it, not planning. And the idea was that they would catch it at the beginning during the construction plans, and they would make sure that the elevations were in the plans and that the certificates were all submitted pre-construction as well as post-construction. So, there, with that practice, there's, it'll minimize the number of errors of not catching these things in the field, because that was one of the things that FEMA brought up in their field inspections, is that Planning looks at these, issues floodplain certificate or development permit, and sometimes they're not carried out through the building process. And so, this way, it's a way of making sure that it's handled by those that are issuing the permits. So, that's one of the biggest changes in practice under this ordinance. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioners, have any other comments or questions?
Yeah, I missed, did we find a solution to page 5, "the will consider?"
Yeah.
Is it county?
Yeah.
Correct. And then, if I remember correctly, I read in there where if you have an issue, you can, there's a complaint process or something. And I have a concern about the maps. Do I have to complain to FEMA, or do I talk to the county, or if there's a, if I have a complaint with the designation on the floodplain, floodway maps?
Actually, since they are FEMA maps, it would be through FEMA itself.
All right. Thank you.
And I also want to suggest that FEMA has, in the past, admitted that oftentimes there are errors with the maps, and they do welcome a challenge. And I think oftentimes, the challenges are through what they call the CLOMAR and the LOMAR process. So, if it's proven to them through an engineering study that clearly the building, the property is outside, then they will go ahead and accept that and do either a conditional map amendment change, or they'll do a complete map revision and remove the property out of the floodway, floodplain, whatever the case may be. Granted, that once the maps are published, they become the map of record. And what works under the LOMAR and CLOMAR process is that if a property is deemed to be outside of the floodplain, even though it's mapped, they basically issue a letter and a statement that that property is outside. And then, typically, that gets cleaned up when they publish the new maps. But there will be a letter out there that is provided to all agencies so that when somebody's trying to seek flood insurance, they're not mistakenly put into a floodplain designation and required to pay for flood insurance. But it's handled at the federal level.
Any other comments or questions? Yes, Marilyn?
The first question I had, you mentioned building official, which I know in here it states building official, but what is the building official?
The building official is a position that rests within Planning and Building Services. It is the chief building inspector. That person has to be certified as the building official for the county. And the way it's been done in the past, by default, it's either been the director or it's been the building official. And typically, the way we've done these before is that it would be that individual or and/or his designee. So, it allows for an employee of the department to review the permits, to make the call, and then to make the decision on whether they need an elevation certificate or not.
So, that's just kind of a general, is this like a state title? Or I guess I'm a little confused, because I thought, okay, building inspector.
The building official is, by code, the person who is supposed to oversee and administer the codes, the California code. And so, over the years, it has gotten more and more technical, so where it used to, the building official used to be the planning director. And over the years, when they started to adopt more and more changes to the building code, they really were looking for somebody who was a certified individual. And that's the person who is the chief building inspector who would conduct that. Now, again, when there is a, the way we've proceeded in this county is, when there is a lack of a chief building inspector, it is the planning director who acts as the building official, because he still has the building inspectors that he can delegate to to do this.
And who certifies these? Are they, is it a federal or a state certification?
It is a state certification. So, what happens is, the building official is certified by the International Code Council.
Okay. I guess that answers that one. And then I have some other, mostly wordsmithing. On page two of the, wow, I guess it would be-
Of the actual statute?
No, with page one, we have Page PC1, and then Page PC2, which is part of your, pretty much, I guess, your letter there. Up in the, on page two, the first, the first completion, the paragraph of the end of homeowners, there's a 1, and I couldn't find anything in there that that 1 pertained to. The very top of page two.
Oh, okay. If a local jurisdiction establishes a greater standard, such as the 1, such as 1 or 2 feet above the base flood elevation, points would be awarded to a committee resulting in significant savings in annual flood insurance premiums. So, we can go ahead and eliminate that, the 1 right up there.
And then down at the bottom, the last paragraph, I'm not really sure, maybe fish and game code is still called fish and game code, not wildlife? Is that correct? Okay, thank you. And then going into the ordinance, it's mostly just wordsmithing. On page one of Chapter 22.17, F, letter F, it says, "Help maintains a," helps, I think that's helps maintain a stable. So, an S after, an S at the end of helps, and remove the S on maintains. And that, I did have that question on the building official on J, which you've already defined, thank you. And then in L, an other, let's see, about the third line down, and other applications, I think there should be an S after application of police power.
Where's that?
Sorry, L.
L.
Third sentence, or third line.
Third line down, beginning with grading and erosion control, and other, I think that should be applications of police power. And if I'm wrong on this, please correct me. I could very well be. I could very well be.
You never know what's jargon in the legalese.
That's right. That's exactly right.
Deputy County Counsel Matthew Kudrowski. I had one addition in terms of when you looked at paragraph J, and while that designates the building official, we could insert that, you know, the building official as defined in Chapter eighteen point zero four, that's the building code.
Is it all that? I'm sorry, is defined in, what was that again?
As defined in Chapter eighteen point zero four, and set that aside with commas.
That one already, and then on page six, at the top of the second paragraph, B as in boy, beginning with the sentence, "Structures such as closure and drainage devices which are constructed and operated in," I think that should be accordance with sound engineering Page seven, B about a little over halfway down, public safety and issuance.
Public safety and nuisance?
And nuisance, thank you. About the fourth line where it begins, "The free passage or use in the customary manner of any navigable," well, that's a hard word. Lake. I think you remove the or river, because it's a lake, a river, a stream, so remove the word or. And then down in A recreational vehicle, item three, it states there, "A light duty truck," and I think I did do a little bit of homework on this, there's also heavy duty trucks that pull RVs, so I'm recommending that we include heavy duty, not just light duty. And I don't know how you want to change the wording on that, if you want to put light or heavy duty, or how you want to word it.
Could just be towable by truck.
Well, that's what I thought, but then I'm thinking about the great big trucks, and does that, so I don't know, whatever your county council recommend there.
I think we could add light and/or heavy.
Okay. That's good for me. And then on page eight, paragraph D in the middle where it says, "Start of construction." The sixth line down where it begins with columns, or any work beyond the stage of excavation, or the placement of a manufactured, I think there should be a D after manufacturer, manufactured And then on page eleven, this is just really minor wordsmithing, but yeah, since Matthew started, I think I'll finish. Under the A permit review, item four, let's see, where the line begins, "Development," I'm going to read this, "For purposes of this ordinance adversely affects means that the cumulative effect of the proposed development," then there should be a comma, "when combined with all existing, all other existing and anticipated development, comma." And on page fifteen, let's see. I'm not really sure how to address this one. In it, I'm sorry, under standards for manufactured home, A four in the middle. And I may need some help with, from you on this, Matthew. It begins on, item four, "In an existing manufactured home park or subdivision on a site upon which a manufactured home has incurred, quote, 'substantial damage as the result of a flood.'" And then it seems like that should be a different paragraph or something, it just doesn't flow right. Then it says, "Shall be elevated on a permanent foundation." It seems like that should be kind of like another paragraph, like under B, where it has one, two, and then a separate paragraph. I don't know how to address that.
You mean like the eyes and the IIs?
Yeah, something like that, yeah. Well, or just a separate paragraph, I don't know, it just doesn't, it doesn't flow right.
Deputy County Counsel Matthew Kudrowski, and I'll let Mr. Gonzalez read this while I'm reading it as well. I think, I think you're correct. I think that that shall, we have this list of numbered one, two, three, and four, and that shall really should be connected to that paragraph A somehow, because that's the verb, that's not in A, but it's there in A four. So all manufactured homes that are in these four scenarios shall be elevated on a permanent foundation, such that the lowest floor is elevated to or above the base flood elevation.
Sixteen, fifteen.
So I'd be happy to, we could try and wordsmith it now, or we can take direction from the commission to, you know, correct this and make that read cleaner before it goes to the board.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
Is this here, right to you, Nash?
Ah, we're down to eighteen, and this is just a very, very minor one. See under conditions of variances, D as in dog, begins, "Variances shall only be issued upon a determination that the variance is the minimum necessary, comma, considering the flood hazard, comma." That's it. So just adding a, what do you call it, comma after necessary. That's all I have. Thank you for bearing with me.
And through the chair, and back to page seven, and the issue of the light duty truck. I believe the intent is that we're going to, that can be towed by something as small as a light duty truck. So I would, I might ask to take direction, we can go with light and/or heavy, but we might try and wordsmith that so it does read more like a minimum standard, because I don't want, then, once you start defining more things, light, heavy, well, what other kind of trucks or other things are that could tow? And so if we set a minimum standard, that might be clearer, if we can get direction to find that and present that to the board. Does that make sense? So we'll, as a fallback, we'll do light and/or heavy duty truck, but if we could take direction from the planning commission to find a better way of stating a minimum standard, so capable of towing X number of pounds, whatever, a vehicle that can tow that much, can we take direction to put that language instead into the board?
I think I did see under heavy duty, it was like up to 10,000, and under light duty was 4,000 or something like that. But I just know there's big RVs out there, fifth wheels and such, that cannot be towed by a light duty truck, that's why I felt it should be.
And I think the intent here is to say it's a vehicle which can be as little as something that can be towed as light duty trucks. So that would then, you know, if it's a vehicle that can, you know, must tow at least 4,000 pounds, that would include heavy duty trucks as well.
That's great. Thank you.
So would that include cars and SUVs? Or is that an issue?
So it's, we have recreational vehicles, a vehicle which is these four things, so we can say designed to be propelled or permanently towable. Well, permanently towable is different than, well, we'll talk about permanent versus not, I guess. But I think if we're talking about permanently towable versus not, I think the issue is, can it be towed by something? And is that something we'd be thinking about more? I look at Mary Lynn, because she has a fifth wheel. Okay. We can look into that to see if that needs more definition or not, but here, the phrasing that was used was permanently towable, so I'm not sure, that probably wouldn't include most cars, is my guess.
The vehicle code may have a definition that you could use that would-
Sounds good. We'll take a look at that.
So you're just going to clean that up, and we'll assume you're, you'll deal with it.
Thank you.
And only one other question, Matthew. So were, the recommended motion is staying the same, is that correct? Is there any difference in wording there?
I'll be offering revised language once we're ready for it.
I have a question in regards to the motion. Unless I'm reading this wrong, is it the intent to repeal all of Division one and Division two?
That could be, that could be a lot of fun. No, it is not, and the, I'll, that's part of my revisions to the recommended motion.
I was going to say, all right.
That's a good old days. No plan's a good plan. Any other comments from the commission?
Yeah, I have what I think might be a silly question. On page eight, C, special flood. There are any references to yourself. I don't see that you define any of that. Presumably, everybody else who is, nobody else.
I read that over and kind of wondered, but yeah.
I thought that was just too technical.
I mean, I did too.
So if there is an explanation from staff on that one?
And this is, just to be sure, this is item C, special flood hazard area, okay? Means an area in the floodplain subject to a 1% or greater chance of flooding in any given year. And that's basically the definition from FEMA.
But what is zone A and AO and A one dash A thirty?
What these zones are, are zones on the map that FEMA has put together, so the A-zone is typically the one, all of these are going to be 100-year flood zones, except that as you start getting into the numbers, they start either providing more detail as far as elevations or less detail. So for example, your A one through A thirty are going to have specific elevations out there. Your As and A Os may not necessarily have specific elevations. And I think a lot of it has to deal with the flood, with what they call the flood insurance study. When they take a river, or they take a stream, and they're able to take and establish control points closer to each other, then you're coming up with more defined scientific information as to the elevations and where that base flood is. And you start getting into the A-zones, and now you're talking about hundreds of feet, in fact, it may be hundreds or thousands of feet apart before you actually start seeing an elevation being established, which means there's a little bit more room for interpretation in those A and AO zones. And that's really what those zones really mean. And then the V-zones are the coastal zones.
That's why it's added new. So I had no idea what FHBM or FIRM was.
The flood insurance rate map, or the flood hazard.
Should that be spelled out?
I think it should.
It is. It's in the definitions.
It's in definitions.
No, it is?
It is in the definitions, but-
I forgot by the time I got here.
I wonder if it's very friendly to the citizens, I mean, maybe we can understand it, but I wonder if not spelling that kind of stuff out and having so much acronism, acronym-
Yeah, there-
Or just put maps in there.
Or just put, yeah, the maps, or something like that.
Or FIRM maps.
Citizens reading this could actually know where to look for those definitions.
We can actually spell it out, and then just put the acronym in parentheses.
Yeah. Any other comments or questions?
Then I would make a motion, however recommended by-
You're up again, Matt.
Okay. Flood boundary and floodplain map, FB.
Would you like us to take a moment while you do that, or are you ready?
I think I have a motion ready, but I have one more change to the ordinance that I might recommend. The title, it's currently titled Floodplain Combining District, and I think we might just simplify that to floodplain ordinance. We're not talking about zoning districts anymore, as far as I can tell, and I just confirmed that with Mr. Gonzalez.
Floodplain ordinance?
And believe it or not, that affected my motion, so thank you.
Are there any other changes you're suggesting to the motion, the recommended motion?
So the recommended motion, I'm going to recommend entire new language for the first paragraph that starts on page three, so that it would instead be, and I'll be reporting this to the clerk as well, "The planning commission recommends that the board of supervisors find that the project is categorically exempt from CEQA and approve ordinance amendment number OA twenty seventeen dash zero zero two, which will adopt a new Chapter twenty-two point seventeen floodplain ordinance, including revisions made and direction provided by the planning commission, and repeal Chapter twenty point one two zero of the Mendocino County Code, making the following findings." The finding, the first environmental finding, I think, can remain the same, and the general plan consistency finding, I would delete the words "and coastal element," period after general plan. I think we would tackle anything with the coastal element as part of an LCP amendment process that would come before you as soon as possible.
That's exactly what I intended in my motion, so.
And is that exactly what the second intended?
I'm very happy we've reached that kind of mental connection.
Did we have a second?
Not that I've-
Okay.
Okay. All in favor, I guess we need, we need a roll call vote for this one. I'm always thinking about my dinner table, are we just all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
You have two behind you, too.
Yes.
Yes.
And one?
Yes.
And? Okay. Could I, I just asked a point of clarification, because I discussed this with Adrienne. I thought she told me that the person who made the motion came last, the second came second to the last.
The chairman comes last.
The, oh, the chairman does come last? Oh, okay. But the maker of the motion comes second to the last?
Yes.
This morning. So I've written down, and the second goes first, the person who makes the motion goes second, and the chair goes last.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for clarifying that.
Okay, we're done with that one. Any other matters from staff?
No, we do not have any other matters.
But we are-
We did mention the cancellation of the May fourth.
Correct.
And you'll send an email to confirm that if you decide to go through?
We need a vote on the cancellation.
Oh, okay.
So moved.
Is there a second for that? Okay. I think we can do that by roll call, or not by roll call, by just voice vote, all in favor of canceling the May fourth meeting?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Are there any matters from commission? Seeing none, motion for adjournment.
Will move.
Nine forty-five people, we're on a roll.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, staff.